Thanks for coming to your city council. I'm gonna call us to order here. We have a lot of things going on tonight. First thing we're gonna all do is turn off our cell phones. Next, I'm gonna remind us that the land where we're doing business and living our lives and raising our children has been occupied for thousands and thousands of years before the people I descended from came. And I just think it's good to keep that in mind as we're doing our work. Now, we're gonna pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. So not quite two weeks ago, I got a phone call from Jen telling me that Tim had died, which was just so sad and emotional for me. And I don't know of any words that I could say that would communicate how we want you to feel supported by us in your time here, Jen. Thank you for coming tonight. Folks can see that we've put a plant in the seat where councillor Coonahan would be sitting. I met Tim in the public service way early on his career. They were gonna move over from Underwood and were building a house just really close to where I live. And Tim wanted to get involved in Hood River politics. He had been on the community council in Underwood. And we sat in the backyard and chewed the fat and schemed and pondered. And he came on council in 2016 and has been, for me, just a a beacon of clarity and commitment. Tim had such a clear, strong civic perspective. One of the difficulties in this job is that people come and tell us why the thing they want for their benefit is the best civic idea. And that often doesn't carry the day, but sometimes it does. And Tim was, felt like always had that bigger-than-himself message that he brought. What's the best for the city? He was such an advocate on the Energy Council. He served with some other councillors to craft the right kind of land acknowledgement for us to give. He would ping me, what I call sort of off-season, like during the middle of the week, say, hey, mayor, shall we talk about getting wood smoke regulation on the agenda? Is that something we should try to push for? He helped me prioritize some things around energy efficiency. Could we prioritize getting electric vehicles and electrified parking spots? It was just such a privilege to serve with him. He was the consummate public servant, doing his ecological work during the day and his community building by night. So I'm heartbroken that he's gone. I'm thrilled that he was here and that I got to be with him when he was here. So Jen, we'll bring the plant to your house later on. Please feel our caring and support and let us know if there's anything else we can do. I'm gonna suggest we have a moment of silence now for Tim Coonahan. We hold you in our love as you go, as you go. May our hearts be at peace as you go. We treasure the work of your precious life. We hold you in our love as you go. I understand there'll be a larger service later on. This is just our meeting tonight. And I must say that I believe that Tim would say, all right, Paul, now you get on with the work. Keep going in the work. So Tim would want us to carry on, so we're gonna carry on. What's the date, Jen? Great. Twenty eighth at the Ruins. Great. We'll see you there. Nice to see you, Jen. Okay, I don't do that every week. Now, in the order of agenda, we have urban renewal. So our chair is in Spain with the grandbabies. So Vice Chair Saunders will carry on with urban renewal.
Oh, boy, I might need a minute. Okay, um, everyone, I'm gonna call to order the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Are there any agenda additions or corrections, Will?
No, there is not.
Thank you. Is there any business from the audience about urban renewal activities?
I just wanna check in order of operations. Susan, you signed up on the urban renewal sheet. Did you intend to speak to urban renewal or to city council? It's okay, great. So that was not intentional, but perhaps there is someone else.
Thank you. Can you turn on the microphone for him as well? Brian, would you mind coming up?
Just here and then address you.
The microphone's already on and.
Okay.
Yep, you'll see yourself on the video.
You can look at us instead of yourself.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Brian Hackett. I am part of the Hood River County Library Board. I am their current president. I'm speaking in my own capacity tonight. I would just like to reiterate some of the things that I've said to both your city manager and the manager of the urban renewal is just how disturbing this body is and Cavalier in its treatment of county missions and county special districts. The city council is taking money from the library. Upwards of ten percent of the library budget is being used to finance city urban renewal, not library operations. I would just implore you to stop abusing the urban renewal authority. To really, what I would say is circumvent the will of Hood River County voters who entrusted me and my body with tax dollars that you are taking. This is going to very quickly lead to a budgetary crisis at the library. And it is going to have a direct impact on our ability to do our job. That you, as a body with almost no oversight, can take this money, I think, is really unfortunate. And the fact that you have repeatedly done this urban renewal over and over again just shows, I think, a disregard for the rest of the county. Thank you.
Brian?
Yes?
Oh, no, thank you.
Oh, I hear my name.
We are moving on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any edits or comments on the news?
Vice Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, moved by Paul, seconded by Grant to approve the consent agenda. Oh, sorry. Chair votes I as well, she has to figure it out. Regular business items, supplemental budget resolution.
Thank you, Vice Chair Saunders, members of the Urban Renewal Agency Board. This is the first supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Makes several house cleaning items to facilitate some of the decisions that we've already made. I'll go through real quickly. There's.
I just, I don't know. Do we have a quorum for this agency?
We do right now, yeah. Yes. Thank you for the point of order. So first is a transfer from contingency for real estate development, training courses at Portland State University in the general fund. A transfer from contingency as well as recognizing higher-than-budgeted beginning fund balances in the Columbia Cascade District and dedicating those monies, which have been interest earnings on existing balances.
Sorry, I'm gonna go back to Paul. The bylaws we're reviewing tonight, do you say a quorum is five members?
So quorum would be a majority, so four of seven. And then, so you can, what we're talking about the bylaws is actually changing that so that this would then, I think this would be a problem. But so what we're talking about changing the bylaws is right now, you can conduct business right now and have three votes carry the day. But in the bylaws.
The quorum itself is five members and we, unless someone's online.
Oh, five, yeah, so four. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Yeah, council of urban renewal and discrepancy.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Paul, Paul, I hadn't thought of her.
Okay.
We've never run into this before. Does that mean we just end the meeting? Yeah, okay.
Yes. Is that because we need form for nine?
Yes, yeah, renewals.
Yeah, until we extend the bylaws, because that's where stuff, we don't have a form. Yeah, it's only four of us here.
Yeah.
I apparently was right. I don't want to ruin my record, but we can't vote on stuff, but we're allowed to hear stuff.
I think that's a good city attorney question, as whether you can convene the meeting without a quorum.
We certainly couldn't have approved the consent agenda.
Right, you absolutely couldn't vote on things. So I'm looking to the fans on the screen. Dan, go ahead, please.
Well, it's your evening. And in order to call a meeting, a public meeting, you need a quorum. I didn't realize that it's nine people on the Urban Renewal Board. But since it is, you need a total, you need five, you need a simple majority to call the meeting. If the four of you want just kind of an informational rundown from Will, you can do that. It would be in your kind of private, personal capacities. So, but you can't conduct business. This would not be an official meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency because you don't have a quorum to convene one.
Okay, well, thank you, Dan. Thank you for remembering that, Paul. I'm gonna un-call this meeting.
But, but sure, if it's okay to be in session but not take any action, two of the items tonight are informational and for just discussion with no action.
I'm not, okay.
I would recommend that we hear stuff and get information. We shouldn't have done the minutes, we can't vote. But I'm hearing Dan say it's okay for us to hear Will report stuff. And so I'd say, here we are, let's carry on with the stuff we are permitted to hear.
Yes. I'm gonna, I mean, hearing stuff and updates, I think I'm comfortable with. I'm not comfortable with us discussing to move towards a future decision if we don't have a full quorum.
Yeah, I was just, since we did take a vote that doesn't count, is there anything procedurally, Dan, that we have to do to negate, negate? So we voted for the consent agenda before you joined? Say that can't carry? Is there anything procedurally that we need to do to undo that?
No, because that was a nullity then, as we say, that it didn't have any effect. And you can, you know, just if you want to have a workshop session, it's just kind of in your personal capacities. This is, you know, you could do this individually or whatever to hear a presentation by someone about something. But understand the rest of the Urban Renewal Agency won't get the presentation. And so if you want this presentation to be heard by everyone on, or at least a majority of those on Urban Renewal Agency, they'll have to hear it too next time or sometime eventually.
Would it be acceptable to encourage them, since they missed the meeting, to watch it on YouTube? Or is that not adequate?
You could do that. I mean, just to bring them up to speed, if they, if you expect them to take any sort of action or understand what's going on to, for some official action later, they're gonna need to have watched that.
So I'm gonna, I guess, if someone, Vice Chair, can I suggest, is it possible to reschedule this to the second meeting in May? I know that's not our normal renewal schedule. Are there things that are really timely that we need to cover before then?
No, all these items can wait.
Okay, I guess both Abigail and Will, would that work for other things on the agenda?
Yeah, I think that'd be fine, just be ready for a longer meeting on May twenty-eighth. It's the Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Okay, I'm gonna suggest we do that, just so we have, you know, all of our urban renewal members can have a fair shake at some substantial conversation. So thank you and sorry, everyone. But I'm gonna not, not adjourn.
I'm gonna resume the city council meeting for which we have a quorum, of which I'm the chair. And in defense of staff, the cancellation that caused the non-quorum happened like twenty minutes ago. So it's not like, anyway. All right, now we are back in council. Do we have any agenda additions or corrections, Abigail?
Sorry, ma'am, we have no additions or corrections.
Now, business from the audience, Susan has signed up. Please, Susan.
Join us, it makes.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, the rim of the UFO thing, make it be green, touch the white. You're just about to do it, it's still red. Touch, touch the edge.
There you go.
Okay. I had originally thought that because, well, sorry, Susan Crowley for eleven twelfth Street Hood River, speaking again on Gaza war, because there had been business before you on that issue. We're always hopeful that you might bring it up again. Tim Coonahan was a main driver of that, in spite of his physically compromised condition. And frankly, I went back and looked at the Zoom appearances that Tim gave on that issue. Gave on that issue, um, not too many weeks before his death, all. I think there were three sessions he was able to participate in remotely. And it should have been obvious then how hard it was for him, I should have watched more carefully, but it was very, very obvious. Um, watching today more objectively. And he was clearly suffering and he was clearly there out of a sense of huge commitment and care. And it would be nice if, in addition to a plant, he also had the. Pleasure of knowing that something he cared about so deeply had shared. A, a majority of this council, but so be it. Um, but I just wanted to honor his commitment, uh, not talk about what I planned to talk about, otherwise having to do with Gaza today. Because his death is a, a profound loss on many levels, because he had such a sense of conscience and compassion. Uh, that was not an easy position to take, and, um. He joined Gladys in her final statement, even though he couldn't even. Bring himself to pick up a phone, I presume, uh, and that was a real state of commitment, so. In his honor and in the honor of the, uh, what, thirty-five thousand Gazans now who've died, half of whom are children. Um, I found a poem that I thought would be good to read in his, uh, memory and in the memory of those Gazans. Um, and here's the poem, it's by a Palestinian poet, Rafi Ziyada. If my words could stop this, I would create a rhythm. Louder than the speed of bombs too familiar. I would learn the lyrics to every freedom song and write it on every building still standing in Gaza. It wouldn't be very many now, but. If my words could stop this, if they could stand in the way of a bomb, a drone, or a single bullet. I would lay them at the feet of every child in Gaza, and again, there are far fewer now. I would offer them like a prayer, recite them over and over and over, like the holy names of God. I would write them endlessly until all language breaks. But words can't stop this, well, we certainly found it out, yeah. So I offer you the silence and a poem and tell you not to worry. We are holding our ground, we are holding our ground, we are holding our ground. We are holding our ground, so that's in honor of Tim and all Gazans who are no longer holding their ground. Thank you.
Amen, thank you.
Oh, one more thing, sorry. Um, if you're interested in the point of view of. Jews who are not supporters of the state of Israel in their actions in Gaza. There's a presentation this coming Thursday, six-thirty, right up here at Riverside Church from Jewish Voice for Peace. Uh, the Portland contingent, they're going to come speak on their perspective on Gaza conflict, so encourage you all to come here.
Thanks for holding that up. Okay, now we have presentations from Al Barton, the Executive Director of the Mini Columbia Center for Living, Al, thanks for coming.
Sure, thank you.
And a little circle's on, so you're good to go.
Do you have a PowerPoint for us?
I do, I s- yeah. Thanks for driving.
It's all you.
Okay, I can just advance any quick.
Yeah.
Council, thank you so much for, um, the opportunity to speak about the amazing work, um. My colleagues at Center for Living do, so thanks, I'm here to mostly educate you, there's no action, no request, um. Mostly at the behest, I got to, uh, meet and talk to Abigail, and she was, thought it'd be very relevant to talk about. The services that our organization provides to not only this city, but, uh, the entire county of Hood River, as well as Wasco and Sherman County's going east, so. Yeah, I'm Al Barton, I'm, uh, as it says up there, I'm a licensed professional counselor by training, I'm not a healthcare administrator, I. Sort of come through this sideways, um, I've been at Center for Living for seventeen years. I'm in a variety of different positions and I live here in the city of Hood River, which I'm super proud and lucky to call my home, so. I have a few slides, um, again, it's, uh, hopefully interactive, if you have questions or comments, otherwise it'll be me clicking through slides and you. Nodding your head saying, okay, that's interesting, so, I will try to, uh. Keep acronyms to a minimum, and hopefully, like I said, it's just an overview, not just of what Center for Living is, but also about community mental health programs, which is amazing. Um, uh, activity and opportunity to keep our communities safe, I hope. My goal is that afterwards you'll understand how community mental health programs are an element to public safety. And, and a critical, uh, part of infrastructure that keeps our communities well, so. Um, and there'll be opportunities for questions, comments, and if there's, uh, um, you know, very deep questions or very simple or overview questions, I hope that's the case, and again, I'm happy to provide my work cell phone. If any of you, um, elected officials have questions, comments, and your constituents, we strive to be very responsive to the community, and so if there's concerns. You think we need to address, I'm happy to do that, and of course, good things too, so. Anyway, um, so that's me and that's the presentation, at least I'm gonna share it tonight, man, that's, oh, and there it goes. Okay, so, are you all seeing, what are you all seeing? Oh, you're there, okay, all right, Chris, wanna make sure all, you're craning your necks to see that, so. Just talking a little bit about community mental health programs, so this is just some, from the very large, um, perspective, so there are statutory, um. Citations that, that, that cite what's called a local mental health authority, right, and there are tribal organizations that are deemed local mental health authorities. And then there are some organizations where it's a county, so if I worked in Ben, this would say DeJuts County. There are some places, especially in Eastern Oregon, where it's a non, nonprofit organization, and we're the only unique. Um, ORS, Oregon Revised Statute one ninety, so we're actually a government entity, much like North Gore, much like a lot of water districts, so I actually work for the government. As do the staff at City of Hood River, so. Um, what does local mental health authority mean, what does it do? It, um, obviously provides for an opportunity for local mental health services and a plan, right, we're expected to draw up a plan every two years to determine. What's, what's doing well, what's missing, and what, what can we, um, look to improve, improve those gaps, so. It also, um, puts together what's called a community mental health program, and those are, every county has one, right? Uh, some places like ours, a couple counties band together, other places, you know, Multnomah County, there, that's plenty for just one county to cover, so. And it's really a huge continuum of care, and when I talk about continuum of care, you know, we're talking about things like screening, so when someone comes and presents for. Um, a concern for a behavioral health problem, and when I talk about behavioral health, I'm talking about that could be a mental health condition. Depression, anxiety, schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, it could be a drug and alcohol problem, you know? Alcohol, drugs, drugs and abuse, um, or for a lot of folks, what we call co-morbid or co-occurring, a lot of people have the interplay of both of those, so. Again, you can see in that description, so, it a lot, well, community mental health program really has a lot of latitude to put together. Crisis services, you know, that's one of our priority populations, so those are individuals in acute psychiatric crisis, so. The state defines those things as suicide, so someone talking about contemplating or acting or. Um, ideating suicide, it obviously, a crisis can also include others that are, um, thinking, acting, planning, making statements about hurting others. Right, and then last but not least, one that we tend to encounter most often, which is individuals who are unable to care for themselves because their. The severity of their mental health condition, so, again, you know, most of us might define a crisis as my cat, you know, ran away, which is sad and terrifying, but. Um, obviously, the state is gonna define suicide, homicide, and that inability to care as the, as what we would define as a crisis, so. A lot of stabilization services, which is making sure, um, that person has the care that they need. Um, he- healthcare, psychiatric care, you know, we employ doctors, psychiatric nurse practitioners. Medications is a big part of that, so it really, if you looked at the footprint that community mental health programs, some in very small organizations, you know, might have a very light footprint. Others, like ours, kind of a small medium, and then obviously in Multnomah County, there would be scores and scores of, of departments, so. Again, we talked about the crisis system, and the crisis system can be, you know, as simple as an, uh, you know, an individual who calls and says, I'm worried about my son. I'm worried about my neighbor, um, it can be law enforcement calling and saying, there's someone making threatening statements on the street corner, it can be. The hospital saying, we have a person at the hospital who's talking about killing themselves, um, but it also is all those things that don't happen in our community. Individuals either headed to or come back from the Oregon State Hospital, which in Oregon is the highest level of care, you know, it's a. For all intents and purposes, a psychiatric jail, it's locked, right, there's twenty-four, seven medical care, um. Obviously, as a community mental health program, we really strive for what we call the least restrictive environment, we really want to see individuals. Live the lives that we all do, right, we live in our houses, we have friends, we have families, we have, you know, faith, whatever keeps us going. So our goal is really to focus on and build a continuum that keeps people in the community, not that there isn't a time and a place for acute. Or psychiatric care, where if someone goes to a hospital, it may be locked, um, but the vast, vast majority is really about keeping individuals. Living the same lives that we do, so. Um, there's a lot of collaboration with, uh, especially criminal justice systems, legal systems, especially. Um, our Department of Human Services, so a lot of the, kind of the other safety net services, um, community mental health programs fit in it too as well, so. And then again, there, it's not limited, there are a lot of, uh, unique and kind of groundbreaking, a lot, we have a lot of flexibility to design services that we think our community needs, so. So what is the purpose, what, why are community mental health programs, you know, there was kind of an anniversary, some of you remember President Kennedy back in the sixties, established the Community Mental Health Program. Act, which was really to kind of what we call de-institutionalize, right, he had some lived experience with his own sister, right, who was very psychiatrically ill, and in those days, you know, in the. Forties, fifties and sixties, individuals might live their entire life, um, in a locked psychiatric setting, right? Now, the community mental health program movement really tried to say, how can we put people back into the community with the supports they need? To function in that least restrictive environment, so, if we look at what community mental health programs do. Is they're gonna provide accessible, coordinated, effective, efficient services, sounds very nice, but what does our community need, so? Again, we try not to deny people because of their billing to pay, that's the other big safety net service, you know, we do have a number of citizens. In our community who are never gonna be able to eligible for the Oregon Health Clinic, you know, because of maybe their job doesn't offer health insurance. They're in that sort of horrible situation where they make too much money to qualify for some type of government insurance, so. We have a sliding fee, so individuals can sometimes pay as low as zero dollars, so community mental health programs really, we try not to define, to deny services whatsoever. Based upon a person's individual, uh, ability to pay, and they have to be timely, that's one of the most challenging pieces is. You know, when I break my arm, right, I don't want to be seen in three weeks for an evaluation, I want care right now, my arm hurts. The same with a, you know, psychiatric and, and behavioral health issues, when someone's in distress, we know that the quicker that they can get access to care, the better, so. Sometimes that can be a, a challenge, but that's our goal is to meet, and they, the state defines that as seven days, so it's a, it's sometimes it's very rapt, it's not. Not business days, calendar days, so when someone calls and says, I think I'm, I'm worried about my drinking, or I'm worried about my depression, the clock starts and we're expected to. Um, have someone screen them within seven days, so, which is a challenge. Okay, community mental health programs, more than just, uh, safety net services, a lot of these types of things, uh, comprehensive planning, which is really. You know, stepping back and thinking about how do we really affect, um, what's happening, obviously, for most of us now, a lot of that comprehensive planning is. Focused on what we call street outreach, you know, how do we engage the individuals that aren't raising their hand and saying, I need help? Right, there's a lot of individuals who, you know, you might recognize, wow, that person clearly isn't able to stop their drinking, or that person is. Living under a bridge and it's freezing cold and they, you know, are seeing and hearing things, so. There's a lot of focus right now on how do we work with community partners to develop what we call street outreach, so rather than just waiting for people to knock on our door or call us on the phone. How do we go actively engage those individuals in the settings that they're in, so. A lot of coordination of services, and a lot of people have, um, they're involved with the child welfare system, they're involved with the aging of people with disabilities. They're involved with probation, so we have to coordinate with those kind of key community partners. I'm a big part of community mental, and again, I talk very fast, so I'll watch your body language, so, I get a little wound up sometimes, excited about these things. But one of the biggest, um, safety net elements that community mental health programs are responsible for is the, what we call the civil commitment process, so. Every state in the Union has an involuntary process to compel someone to seek care. And now that doesn't sound very warm and fuzzy or very trauma informed, but we all know that balancing sort of the wellness of the community and the safety of the citizens with. You know, individuals' rights and, and freedoms is sometimes a tenuous balance, so the civil commitment process is. If someone is unable, meets one of those three criteria, suicide, homicide, or inability to care. The community mental health program can place them on what's called a hold, which is just a nice word for directing law enforcement. To take that person directly to a psychiatric facility against their will, right, which again, sounds quite heavy-handed and maybe not the most warm and fuzzy, but it is. A balance, which we take very seriously, it's not something that's taken lightly, um, it happens a couple times a month, probably. But that person, once they are detained, which is just a nice word for escorted with law enforcement to a psychiatric facility. Um, they have five business or judicial days to get before a judge, and then the judge has the opportunity to call witnesses. It's just like you see on TV, there's a, you know, prosecution, or in this case, the state. Um, argues that this person is dangerous and does have a mental health condition and does need care. Or their defense attorney argues just the opposite, so we're responsible for that process, so. Again, we have a really strong relationship with our judicial district, which is a really, uh, hasn't always been that way, but it's a very, you know, a very core part of what we do. Kind of behind the scenes, again, other pieces, that crisis response, which is, is twenty-four, seven, so at three in the morning, if you call the number, someone live will answer the phone. And if some, if law enforcement, if an individual, we will respond in the community at all hours of the night, so. The other piece where community mental health programs kind of fit the bill, there are a number of people, you know, within. A half a mile of where we're sitting, there's a lot of counselors, right, if you need psychotherapy, if you need counseling, you know, down at the waterfront. Here on Oak Street, there are a lot of people who will see you for counseling, however, a lot of the individuals that we see. Um, need intensive services, so kind of like if you can imagine in medicine, specialty care, you know, neurology and the, all those ologies. Right, the community mental health programs provide those intensive services, so, someone who, you know, has lost, someone is engaged in a divorce. You know, they might be really raw and upset, but that probably, probably abate and they'll get better, whereas if I have severe schizophrenia, I'm gonna need ongoing support. And not just like, hey, I'll talk to you every two weeks in therapy, but actually, I'm gonna check on you four times a week in your house, so we offer a lot of intensive. Community-based services, so, and then there's a lot of specialty, kind of unique outpatient programs that are offered, so. Again, Center for Living is the local mental health authority here, so you're, the three counties all banded together and said, we won't want to do this alone, there's a lot of responsibilities, let's, uh. Be better together, and they put together the community mental health program, so. Center for Living is also what's called a certified, we love our acronyms too, sorry, but we're a certified community behavioral health clinic. And what that is, is, you know, there's a big push, individuals with serious mental health problems tend to die. Sometimes twenty, twenty-five years statistically earlier than the rest of us would, on average, live, and we, why, why is that happening? Why is that, is it, is it, you know, lifestyle choices, smoking, drinking, you know, living out in the cold? Is it the medications that they take, is it their genetics? We don't really know, but the bottom line is, we have a real opportunity to provide what we call total care, and that sounds kind of. You know, like what you'd see on a billboard, oh, we provide total care, but it's really simple, we provide medical screening and medical. Um, evaluation of individuals, because a lot of the folks that we work with, they haven't seen primary care in years, sometimes decades. And not surprisingly, some of them have chronic health conditions, so, obviously, we want to help their depression, we want to help their drinking, but if we can help their high blood pressure. Or hypertension, all those types of things, we want to do that too. So here in Hood River, as I mentioned, we serve the three counties, we see about fifteen hundred unique people here in Hood River. Again, like, this is the county, it's not necessarily gonna break just the city, and about thirteen thousand different types of services, and we'll talk a little bit about those in a minute, so. Just checking on time, and again, questions or comments, otherwise, I'm just gonna keep, uh, all. As the mayor knows, I will keep talking. Couple things to think about, again, we talked about the safety net, what does that really mean, it sounds dramatic, it sounds, you know. It's different than, than EMS, but it really works towards, if you think about the horrible interplay between people who are unhoused. They oftentimes have complex trauma histories, right, not just their own life and development, but, you know, imagine worrying every night about, is someone gonna steal my stuff? Is someone gonna kick me down the road, is someone gonna assault me, is somebody gonna hurt me, so they have complex trauma, and then oftentimes that horrible interplay. Especially lately with the prevalence of illegal drugs, right, fentanyl, I'm sure you've had plenty of information about it, but. You know, the potency, the, the power, the availability and the price of those medications is outrageous, if it was like, it's like the tech industry, it's just. It's so atrocious, so cheap and so potent and so powerful, so when you add those three things together, right, that's kind of what we, we really miss out, but our job is to. What, unfortunately, sometimes wait until that person crosses that line of dangerousness, because. In their mind, they might feel like, oh, I'm fine, I'm doing okay, I'm, maybe my life isn't wonderful, but it's really, really challenging, and again, this is a si- si-. This is a situation that plays out in Portland, it plays out in Coos Bay, it plays out in Baltimore, Los An-, you know, Los Angeles. How do we as a nation really address those individuals that have those complex challenges? That don't have the wherewithal to say, you know, I need help, I'm ready to change my life, so. Again, addressing chronic conditions, again, a lot of the, um, conditions, both behavioral health-wise and physical health, how do we prevent people from dying early? Um, again, a big part of community mental health programs is that, you know, again, because we strive for the least restrictive environment, it's really about saving taxpayers' dollars, right? Again, that's not the full sole purpose, but really, we want to provide cost-effective care that really prevents things like emergency room visits. You know, when someone goes to a psychiatric hospital, anybody have a guess on how much a stay at a psychiatric hospital for a night might be, if you were paying cash? Yeah, two, two to three thousand dollars, yeah. Um, the state hospital, one individual can be thirty thousand dollars a month, um, to be served, so yeah, do the math, you know, that's a. So again, community mental health programs, you know, we can pay a whole team, the five of us can take care of, you know, a few individuals way more cost-effectively. And many times just as well as some of those high-level, there's a time and a place for all those types of things, but. Again, oftentimes, community mental health programs tend to also be the safety net, where, you know, if I have my own private practice, if I'm here on Oak Street, and someone comes. And someone comes who has a very complex case, suicidal, a really horrible trauma history, significant medical problems, I don't have to see them. And I can say, you know what, I don't think this is the best fit, you need to go to the community mental health program. So the community mental health programs tend to be the nets that see the most complicated cases. You know, if you hear the presentations of individuals that come, it's not just, I'm having a hard time, you know, wondering who I am, it's, I'm overweight, I can't stop smoking, I have depression. I'm struggling with drinking, so that those comorbidities can be a big part of it. Okay, sorry for the, the minutia here, you might need to put on your glasses, and I appreciate, thanks for the city for. This is uh probably a bit gibberish, but I'll make it a lot clearer, so. The first column is going to be the programs, so one, at the very least, even though you may not know what most of those acronyms are, it's fine. You just get a snapshot of the breadth, right, of community mental health program services. So those are the types of things we provide to your city and to your county, right? And I can walk through some of those acronyms, but I'll watch your faces for timelessness, but. Many of those are specialized programs that are considered, what are considered evidence-based medicine, so just like. You know, you're, hopefully your doctor and your dentist provide interventions and healthcare to you, that's what we consider evidence-based, meaning rather than just. You know, Al and Doug and Megan say, oh, we think we'll just do a little this and a little of that, but there's clear research that says things like at the top. Assertive community treatment, right? There's an assertive community treatment program in Coos Bay, in Seattle, in Baltimore, in Los Angeles. And, you know, there are, it's an evidence-based program for really, really severely mentally ill individuals. That grabs onto them very, very tight, and it sees them four to five times a week. Someone carries a beeper twenty-four seven if law enforcement calls, if they're in jail, someone from the ACT team gets out of bed and goes and makes contact with their. Typically small, you know, they serve anywhere from eighteen to thirty people. It's a very small, very intensive program, so. Anyway, one of the things you can see is the change between twenty-three and twenty-two, so that's one of the programs actually that we had less services here in Hood River County. Um, and I know one of the reasons is because one of those people moved out of Hood River County. So at twenty-three, that's, it really takes one person, just imagine if we see somebody three to four times a week, right, and. If, you know, one person leaves, that's a lot of services that diminish, so. So the ones in green are the services that I really wanted to really celebrate our teams for really um improving their level of service, right? So things that went up, most, some of them were pretty stable, some went down, drug court went down notably. Um, our crisis services stayed about the same, services to Cascade Lock City. Um, Aim High, that is a service. When someone goes to the state hospital. When I first started at Center for Living, it was like, oh, great, you know, Grant's gone to the state hospital, I clicked on people's names to. Provide color to, not that you're ahead of me. Anyway, when people are at the state hospital, in the old days, it was like, oh, great, he's gone, we don't have to worry about it. Well, we knew what happened, is people would languish at the state hospital, nobody was back home saying. Let's get, how do we get him back here, back into one of these programs? So that's what that service is, so. Again, our DUI, obviously straightforward, diving into the influence, there's a lot of education and diversion. Um, ESA is an early psychosis program. Um, you know, if you're like me, that have family members with schizophrenia, you know, you know that when they were fifteen or sixteen, they. Were generally, you know, what we might call okay, and then as in early twenties, they started to decompensate, maybe they didn't take care of themselves, they had. Uh, ideas and thoughts that really weren't based in reality, maybe they started to behave dangerously or unproductively, so that ESA is that early psychosis program. For, for young people, fifteen to twenty-five years of age, so again, an amazing evidence-based program, community-based program. You know, in the old days, we would wait for someone to get so unwell that we could lock them up, right? We would detain them. You know, an eighteen-year-old would get sent to the hospital, and would get put on a unit, locked with a bunch of adults who were, you know, quite rambunctious and loud and maybe. Scary. Nowadays, it's really about a softer touch, meeting in the community, educating the family about what the course of the illness is, so. Most of the other ones, I think, are pretty straightforward. ICTS is intensive children's services, so we provide a lot of home-based kid service, that doesn't seem like a lot, but. You know, some of those cases are the ones that are headed to foster care, a family who isn't able to manage someone's behavior. Again, our jail diversion has been a huge success, that's just what it sounds like. You know, mentally ill, seriously mentally ill individuals are vastly overrepresented in the legal, does anybody know where the largest psychiatric treatment center in the US is? I guess.
Right.
That's number two, yeah, Cook, Cook County is number one, so. Yeah, their psychiatric, you know, psychiatric care happens in jails, right? I think LA County might be third, so. Again, um, jail diversion is about intervening and interdicting and diverting people from getting arrested, right? And then if they are arrested, getting them from getting booked into Norcore, and if they are booked into Norcore, getting them out quicker. And then working with probation and law enforcement to prevent them to go back in. Again, most of the crimes that seriously mentally ill people commit are not. Measure all that, you know, they're not murdering and writ, there are instances where that happens, but the vast majority of the crimes are trespassing, you know, um. Petty theft, those types of things, so. Mental health standard, that's what most of us would think of as counseling, you know, you see in the movie, you come into an office and. You sit down and someone warm and friendly talks to you about your problems and you learn things every two weeks, so. We have a lot of contracts, we work with the Oregon Child Development Council, there's a parent-child interactive therapy, which is a kind of a. Two-to-seven-year-old intervention, pre-commitment, that's that, it's nice to see that pre-commitment number going down, that's the civil commitment process. Someone on a hold and a detainer, so seeing that, we want that number to go down, right? Because if we're diverting people from. The hospitals and from the jails, we don't have to use those extensive measures, so. SPMI, that's a huge number, severe and persistent mental illness, that's a designation by the state, typically it's. An adult who has a chronic uh behavioral health condition like schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, severe depression, so. And then drug and SUD is our acronym for drug and alcohol, you can kind of see what that looks like, so again, our drug and alcohol services have also increased, supportive employment. And housing, those are pretty straightforward stuff, so. Uh, again, a grand total, just I'm really pleased to see our teams um develop more services to your communities, so. Questions, comments, again, I know it's probably a load of information for a Monday night, but off we go. This is, just gives you a quick snapshot, where do services happen? The vast majority of services do happen, you know, seventy-four percent. Happen in an office, right? But what we really want to see is that those pie wedges up above grow, right? We telehealth has been a force, you know, obviously that came online during the pandemic, but it's still available, a lot of people who. You know, can't get a babysitter or live in the upper valley, or transportation is an issue, you know, a remote session is a very viable way to get good care. I'm really proud of and want to see the orange one grow, the community, that's what we call a street outreach, right? That, that doesn't sound like a lot, five percent, but that's meeting someone. Um, on the street at a business, you know, it's a, a business calling and expressing their concern. The rest of it's pretty straightforward, home, the hospitals, the jail, the zero percent, it actually means it wasn't, it was less than one percent. It just kind of gives you, all of those bullets give you a snapshot of where community mental health programs go, so. There's a big push, obviously, especially for crisis and jail diversion to move outside offices, so we want to beat people. In their homes, in the schools, um, where they live, so. Funding, um, how does all this happen? This sounds great, but how does it stay supported? Everybody has to pay their bills in, in dollars. Uh, we get money from the state, right? Um, the county financial aid assistance award is Oregon Health Authority's direct funding. Four counties to provide these services, so. We did not really get to negotiate that, it's a set amount, but it really covers all of those services, especially crisis, especially those. Kind of those evidence-based programs like ESA and ACT that would never, ever, ever support themselves. If we ran them on, how many individuals showed up for care, they would close in a month, right? They're just never going to fund them. It's like your fire department and your police department, right? They don't, they don't generate, maybe, maybe they generate. You all could tell me. We do, uh, we're fortunate to have strong relationships with our insurance companies, um, here in. The county of Hood River and the county of Wasco, Pacific Source, uh, Coordinated Care Organization, which is just a fancy word for the state's rated contract with insurance companies. Um, they provide direct supports and contracts also for a lot of those safety net services, so we really. Want to appreciate them over the last, you know, three years ago, we were in a very dire financial situation, now we're quite healthy largely at the result of. Um, you know, the state has recognized that if you don't fund these services, you're going to pay for them somewhere else, so. In Sherman County, we still have another insurance company, so Gobi Greater Oregon Behavioral Health Initiative covers our Sherman County citizens. There's a lot of grant, not a lot of grants, we've really moved away from grants, you know, if you've ever worked in a nonprofit. Chasing after grants always means that, you know, you're always hunting for the next thing, whereas those top two things are very predictable. They allow us to understand, here's what our resources are, here's the staff that we can afford to hire, here's where we're going to be in the next two years, so. And then again, we do collect fees, right? Some people literally will pay ten dollars at the window, some people will pay zero. But there are some private pay, pay people, and we do accept other insurance, but the vast, vast majority of people have Medicaid, right? I would say upwards of probably seventy percent of the individuals who come. And then Medicare is probably uh the second insurance at about eight, eight percent of. So again, you can already just by those two insurances alone, that says something about um the populations we serve. Challenges, okay, workforce, again, we're at a twenty-seven percent vacancy rate, so tomorrow we have the money, the budget to hire forty-eight. Uh, people, and then again, this is not just in Hood River, this is all three counties. Um, yeah, that's a lot, right? We have a hundred and, as if we hired two people this week, two more tomorrow, so we're a hundred and forty-two. Which is amazing, um, two years ago, when I started as the interim, we had seventy-two people. Um, so workforce is a huge issue, right, for behavioral health, it's actually, it's really considered a crisis, um. Why is that? Why don't people, I mean, what a lovely place to come and live and work in Hood River County, um. We have to compete with telehealth, right? There are a lot of individuals who can, not making this up, can live in their van and travel around Utah and. Provide counseling to people remotely, right? And they can make probably as much as we can pay them. Uh, community partners sometimes have a very competitive salary. Again, when you looked at that snapshot of the acuity of the individuals we serve. It's hard work, a lot of people, you know, say, I still want to help people, but boy, you know, that deal of, that exposure to trauma and challenge is too much for me, so. A lot of our community partners um tend to uh inherit our staff after they're done. Obviously, there's a demand, a lot of people, you know, we are not at a loss at all for um people knocking on our door. Administrative burden, this is my fist pounding, whenever I get in front of elected officials, I want to talk about, you know. We can't control how acute the clients are, we can't control that people can work in their van, what we can control is that the, the staff that work with me. The types of burdens to, if I showed you the process to enroll someone in care, you would say, are you kidding? When do we get down to like talking about why I'm here, so. I will pat my fist and say, as elected official, this is well within our grasp to relieve the administrative burden. You know, government red tape, all the, whatever you want to call it, but the steps that, that have very, I'm pontificating here, that. This, the things that have very little outcome on someone's wellness or their care. They're just, they feel like to the individual doing it, to the client, so there's my soapbox, if we can remove administrative burden, we can't control. You know, the availability of local housing, we want to appreciate the mayor and, and uh city manager for helping focus on local housing, not just for clients, but also. You know, if you're a nurse, if you're a teacher, if you're a firefighter, um, if you're a, you know, work for community mental health program. Finding and then affording a place to live is a very big challenge for us, I mean, um, so that's also what we're competing against. All right, opportunities on the downhill slide. Um, you know, we are still a recovering agency, the agency went through a lot of turmoil, um, we had some challenging leadership, we had a pandemic. You know, we had a huge workforce exodus, we lost scores and scores of great people. Um, we were on the precipice of our funding, it was quite a dire picture, so it was, uh. Many of the staff who've been there, you know, can remember two, two and a half, three years ago when things were very tough. Um, and so the folks that stayed around to make a better day, not just for the organization, but for your communities is, is uh. Is touching, but also heroic, in my opinion, so. So we're still trying to get on our feet, obviously hiring twenty-seven percent people. Uh, housing partnerships, there've been some amazing, um, the Community Action Program here locally. You know, four or five years ago, I would have said, yeah, the Community Action Program, they help people with weatherization, you know, they built. A turnkey housing opportunity in the DOWs, um, it's, we have uh eight individuals who are, we partnered with them to. You know, because a lot of our folks, as you can imagine, have difficulty finding housing, they might have a shepherd rental history. They might have symptoms which kind of might freak out their neighbors and make concern more, you know, might concern hotel owners. Uh, it's hard to house people with behavioral health problems, but to create those things have been, nothing short of amazing, so. I mean, there's some really, again, I want to applaud the city, thank you counselors for allowing the city manager and mayor to focus on that, because it's a really. It's not rocket science, right? If people don't have their basic needs met, all these other fun things um aren't going to really make a difference, and so focusing on basic needs like. Supported housing, right? Housing with support, someone on site twenty-four seven, kind of like if, you know, in college, they had a residential RA, you know, who kind of helped and said, hey. Hey, guys, keep it down, hey, no, no, you can't do that here. That's what supporting housing is for folks with serious mental illness. We're developing a crisis resolution center, we got some funding from, if anyone wants to see, I'll have some handouts. Um, we want to build a regional crisis resolution center, which is a diversion from jail, it's a diversion from the hospital. It's a twenty-three hour um stay, which sounds kind of, when I first heard it, it sounded kind of strange, but it's. It's recliners and someone can check in without medical clearance, instead of being sent to a psychiatric hospital or put to jail or put to the hospital. They can be treated with dignity for twenty-three hours, and usually, usually, the research from most of those programs is that. Within that time, the, you know, the, the situation either ramps up notably, or notably declines, and so it's a very, very. Trauma-informed, which is just a, meaning all of us would want to be treated that way. It's a cost-effective diversion. I expect that in the next couple of years, it'll just be a standard of care for our community, so we're uh working with the state to make sure that those are funded. There's one in Bend that does an amazing job, but you know, every year they're like, how are we going to pay for this? But we did get some money from the legislature, so if you see your elect, local elected officials, again, bipartisan, red, blue state, doesn't matter. All of them came together and recognized that we need this, they just gave eight million dollars for the effort, and then. We have a little bit of money from a previous effort, and we're seeking money from the Oregon Health Authority to also build a drug and alcohol residential. You know, when someone wants to quit drinking or drugging, if they have to wait two or three weeks to get into a residential bed, my drinking is so out of control. That I can't stop and I need to be, you know, housed in a place where people are going to care for me. We want to build twenty beds of those here in our communities, so. Um, and then last but not least, is that in a street outreach piece, you know, no matter what you call it, there's just a lot of individuals who we can access for whatever reason. Right? And it's, it's, uh, there are some models, there's some promising models, especially out of like Marion County. Um, in Seattle, which is, it's not rocket science, you have individuals who, again, don't look like me. Who show up on the street and, and encounter the individual and try to help focus on what they need, right? Rather than coming and saying, well, let's get you some medicine, they want to focus on, where are you going to sleep tonight? You have a wound, can I help you dress that? You need medical care, can I talk to a doctor? You know, you want someone to talk to to solve your immediate problems, I can help you do that, so. It's not rocket science, it's very, very hard to recruit, it's very challenging work, um, just like our crisis teams, it's, it can be very, very demanding, right? Um, but you need someone that, you know, whether it's a citizen, whether it's a business, whether it's a concerned family member, whether it's a law enforcement agency, where they can divert and hand that. Call off, if there's no public safety issue, that they can hand that call off to someone who can provide care to them, so. We want to develop that here, there's some, uh, something will definitely be coming, we'll partner, thanks to the sheriff here at English and also the sheriff in Moscow County. They've been working with us to develop this, to bring it to our communities, so. Um, that was a rambling rapid talk, I could talk for the rest of the evening, but I'll, I'll spare you my passion and interest. Questions, comments, large, deep, small, I'm happy to help, again, concerns, I'll be quiet and listen to you.
Thanks for coming out, thanks for the leadership of this vital environment. Safety net, questions, comments, go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Sure.
It sounds like you do overlap with our emergency services, potentially other departments, uh, how is that collaboration going? Anything you would love to see improved, or?
No, I, I, I would say especially uh our law enforcement partners, um, you know, we're really fortunate to have, um. You know, I, I, I can't think of the last, sometimes there's opportunities to improve, but I, I think we're really fortunate, whether they're deputies. Whether they're city police in both cities, actually, um, you know, the trauma-informed response, we don't oftentimes think about law enforcement as. Trauma-informed, but they really, you know, some of the interventions that they provide are actually quite compassionate and caring, so I, I'm really. Actually quite encouraged by those relationships, um, you know, I think the biggest challenge for all of us is sometimes what that person needs. We, law enforcement, EMS, we don't have, which is, where's this person going to go tonight? It's cold outside. You know, there's smoke in the air, it's really hot outside, this person needs a place to be tonight, where someone can take care of them, so. I would say that's the hardest part, EMS, the same, I don't, I, I would, I have nothing but kudos, we do, um, a crisis intervention training. Two times a year, which is an evidence-based, week-long training for law enforcement, there were a couple, three Hood River City. Officers, all relatively younger folks, but I was really pleased to see them, and again, I had the opportunity, I get to role play and be one of the, you know, folks that they have to respond to, again. Just, um, you know, their intelligence, their compassion was pretty compelling, and I'm not just saying that there were problems we would want to tell you. So I really appreciate their willingness to take it seriously and try to develop their skill set, because we really, you know, our communities really expect our law enforcement to be kind of. Half, you know, public safety, but in social work and mediation dispute resolution, so. I don't know, thank you counselor, no feedback, I think it's, uh, I have a solid relation, we have a solid relationship with the chief, the Epi and the, um. Lieutenant, so. Yeah, good question.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah, no, I. You know, we are, and I think what is an opportunity is that there's an opportunity to kind of chalk talk, sometimes afterwards, like, okay, next time, maybe we could do this and this. But that's great, you know, that's just any, the, uh, de-compress, decompressing after, you know, kind of a hectic or kind of frightening. Intervention is uh always a good thing, not a bad thing, so.
Yeah, uh, on, on the heels of that, you know, obviously, there's, there's certain things that you're aware of, that the city council is, uh, you know. Very much looking at portable housing, right, in the county, right, so definitely some touch points. Are, are there any touch points that you feel that are related to, you know, impediments to your, to your success beyond any of the relationships that you have with the, uh, the departments, uh? Legislatively, et cetera, that you think the city could, could advocate for?
Hmm, well, that's a great question. I, I shared my one piece about red tape. Again, I think that's probably, you know, if you're, have contacts with your legislators and if they ask what behavioral health needs, that would be a big boost to us, is. Is eliminating that, just takes a lot of time to, the time that could be spent on care, spent on other stuff, um. No, I think my other biggest ask would be, again, I think just that focus on that basic needs, again, if anybody, um. You know, if individuals, especially citizens, have concerns, I don't want those people next to me in my backyards, we're happy to. Come have conversations, to hear success stories with individuals who have been. individuals who have been in the, you know, I think in the city of the Dalles, they've had three calls to the annex, right, which is the turnkey housing. Um, you know, that's vastly what the citizens thought was going to happen. So if your constituents have questions about that, concerns, um, I don't, that's a great question. I don't think I have any specific ask or any, you know, glaring glaring concern, other than it would be nice to have. I'd love at some point to build um to collaborate with the other healthcare entities to develop some type of employee housing. So that would be, you know, I have a colleague who lives in near the Facebook uh park in Endel Park, I guess. The Facebook, you know, as they call them the Facebook apartments and it's open to teachers, right? Because a teacher, where are they going to live near that school? And so I think if we could develop places for our middle class workers to live would be amazing. Um, you know, we we can offer them sign on bonuses, relocations, but where and, you know, how they're going to afford a place to live, that would be amazing. So I think that would be a huge incentive. Um, the other piece is, I think childcare, right? We'd love to offer. That's a huge incentive for individuals too, is, you know, where I want to do the work, who's going to take care of my kids during the day? So yeah, great question. I'll think of it.
Hey, if we had Facebook money, great.
Right, that'd be good.
Doug, uh, sorry, uh, asked my question earlier, is there anything at the C level, red tape wise, against your wife? Yes, no?
Boy, there's, I don't have anything that comes to mind. I didn't query the teams in terms of, I, you know, I knew they knew I was coming to talk to the council tonight. I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I think um, you know.
Anything else you have red tape wise that has to be advocated for the state level? Let us know more explicitly what that is later.
That'd be great. Yeah, I think there'll be some bills, especially in the next session, that really help. Again, focus on that crisis resolution center, that would be amazing. We want to build it for this region, right? We want to be able to have that. And when we say region, we know the people from Washington are going to come too. So I would say if you could push legislators to sign on and support those crisis resolution centers, that's again, it's just a triple win. It's better care, it's way more cost effective care, and it's here locally. So. Yeah.
To me, it's very reassuring letting it wash all over. Of course, I don't understand exactly each point you were making and the complexity of your field is is real, but knowing that you're our guy and you've got got folks out there doing it, it's great.
Thank you. Yeah, and happy to, if people have other questions, constituent, again, I really, really want to be transparent. Um, you know, most reason will be more can on improving our transgender affirming care policies at the, really at the request of families and and friends. So if anything comes, I would want to be super transparent. I'm happy to give you my number and say we've got a citizen who's asking about this. So because sometimes you'll hear about that, we want to be a good partner. How do we do on time?
Great, thanks, Tom.
Couldn't even time it. Pleasure to see all of you. Thank you.
Want you to a couple of public hearings. The first is our waterfront maximum indebtedness increase. I have a script. Is that the right thing, Abigail? Or Will?
That's correct. Every renewal administrator will.
This is the time scheduled for a public hearing regarding ordinance twenty eighty-two, the first substantial amendment to the waterfront urban renewal plan. The ordinance increases the waterfront urban renewal districts authorized maximum indebtedness by two point one five million dollars to seven point nine zero million dollars. We will first hear a report from staff.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Blackburn, uh, members of the city council. Um, I believe, uh, you know, we've talked about this many times, I won't go uh belabor the details. Um, just to note that um, this is to fund um the cla- uh replacement of the collapsed storm water line uh in the waterfront area. Um, as you noted, it uh in the title, it increases the maximum indebtedness to seven point nine million dollars. Substantial amendments must be approved in the same manner that the original plan was approved. And so right now, we're at the end of a multi-month process. Include uh citywide mailing, uh presentation to climbing commission, resolution by the urban renewal agency and uh meet a forty-five day meet and confer period with all the overlapping districts, uh which has then brought us to this public hearing for the first hearing of uh ordinance uh twenty eighty-two. Um, typically, we will need to read, respond uh to any input. Uh, no input was received, uh input from the overlapping districts. No input was received other than a generic uh letter of support from the county, which is in your packet. And uh since that has no suggestion, it uh needs uh no response uh as well.
Thank you. Well. Questions if we're up this time? We will now take public testimony. Jen, has anyone registered to speak?
No, your honor.
Or provided written testimony on this topic? Public hearing on the first substantial amendment to the waterfront urban renewal plan is now closed. And the city council will deliberate on the adoption of ordinance twenty eighty-two. The fourth and deliver.
Maybe I have a question for Will, but when this came in front of urban renewal, there was like the policy choice about potentially need to return the excess money once the storm water thing is passed, is is that like a policy of this fund or is it still on the air?
Uh, yeah, so the urban renewal agency um ex uh made, there was motion in a in a second and a and a vote yes, that um any money is not needed for this project should be um sent back. Um, so I take that as as urban renewal agency policy right now. Um, although it is on my list to bring back a formal resolution uh to that effect.
Okay, thank you. So I I guess with, I mean, with that knowledge, because I was the one that was uncomfortable with the broad based thing, let me find a motion. Um, I move to hear ordinance number twenty-two on tonight's agenda for the first time by title only.
Second.
We request a second by Paulson. Uh, discussion.
Look forward to this getting back on the tax rolls for all the overlapping districts since explicitly as we can make it. Yeah, full, full.
Fast.
Yes.
Uh, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? opposed? Chair, we're by motion fast. Did that one, right? Okay, we have a public hearing on the schedule of building fees, rates and charges for the upcoming fiscal.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, as required, uh, any modifications to the methodology? Uh, fees either increase or decrease um and from your building program is required to be approved uh through the uh through the state. Um, we have provided our proposed methodology for twenty-four twenty-five, which is the second change now of thirteen ways uh to include modified fees, um some probably some reductions, some increases, um and just really a revision to take a different approach to this. Uh, the state has approved it as required and you are required to have a public hearing locally for people to express their concerns or their wishes. Um, that is the purpose of tonight's event. You have a resolution on here for approval of these fees. There were a couple amendments from the state um to fit some of their standardized language. Uh, we were trying to fit a flat fee in percentage. Um, they required a couple modifications to the tenant improvement permits, basically saying the amount will be the amount. Um, that's the language they wanted. Uh, there were some modifications requiring uh the to articulate how solar panels would be split between electrical permits, which we don't um, we don't administer here at the city and the structural aspect of a solar panel. Um, so rather minor in nature, but important and um the request would be from staff is to approve the resolution uh that would replace the previous resolution regarding building permit fees. This would become effective July first twenty-four, first day of fiscal year.
I realized I was supposed to start with the script, but we're just going to carry on. I call the order of public hearing relating to modification of building permit. Form of the council is present and I will ask all councilors to disclose any bias or conflict of interest and bias in this matter. Do any councilors have uh disclosures to declare? Would anyone in the audience like to question any counselor on any disclosure bias or conflict of interest or otherwise challenge the participation of any member of council? Jen, it seems a little funny, but is there anyone online? Okay. Uh. Uh. Dustin, is there anyone else who would, is is part of the presentation?
No.
So we, again, we have no, no other testimony. Uh, any questions for staff now at this point? I will now close the hearing. We will deliberate.
It seems good. I'm going to make a motion if you guys agree. Okay. I move that the city council adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero six, adopting the building schedule of fees, rates and charges for fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five.
I will second.
Group by Saunders, second by subpoena. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Chair, we're tied, I hope it passes. Okay, now we have a funny one. So I'm going to preach for a moment here about murals. We had a robust discussion about this. Uh, first amendment, often a a a a topic for robust discussion. But it came to my knowledge, awareness later, since the first reading, it's not something that occurred to me and I didn't hear anyone else raise it, which is that
there's a way in which this mural code really is at odds with one of our very clear stated goals in the city. And I hadn't thought of it in that way. And the argument, I think, goes something like this, is murals can be a powerful tool for reconciliation, healing, integration, diversity, growth. Janet Hamada, one of our vital community partners at Nextdoor, explained to me that they have a very uh, very powerful mural on their building in the Dalles um that they felt was really a helpful step in uh the healing, the 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 inclusion about uh some different groups in their community. And I know for a fact that as I was trying to figure out which way to vote on the mural code, it wasn't occurring to me that this was a uh, community equity issue at all, like that didn't occur to me. I thought we were talking about other important issues about here. So where we are right now is we 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 passed it, we had the first reading and it was going to be tonight, the second reading. Now, first of all, there's only four of us. Second of all, I don't know which way we would vote, given the old information or the new information. My recommendation is and Dan and Abigail, my recommendation is that we don't try to pass anything tonight. Let's have some more voices. We're always going to be short a voice for the next few weeks, but um, let's try to have more voices before we try to to move this forward. But having some discussion about it, I think would be useful. Abigail, how does that strike?
That sounds fine, mayor. Do you want to hold that in the context of a public hearing or just have a kind of conversation? Just wondering if we're indeed having a public hearing, um, you'll need to read the script to get us started.
I'm really impressed by the scripts.
Says that, what's that? Oh, okay. Because we're in second reading. Great. Well, if I can give you just a quick staff report.
Please.
And then we can uh identify our options and the city attorney is on the screen too, so he can be helpful. I appreciate you, Dan. Um, we held the first uh reading on this topic on April twenty-second. Since then, as the mayor indicated, there have been um comments and a request from our partners, C D P and um C C H C, uh community development partners and uh Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation, the folks who are working with us to build seven eighty random housing project. Um, that they had planned uh to include a mural as part of the seven eighty random housing project. Um, and uh that future affordable housing projects may also wish to incorporate murals into their developments. So taking that information, staff went back uh to create that kind of um to create some language that would allow for that narrow piece. We definitely heard from you as council that you wanted uh any mural code to start kind of tight and then you could always loosen up later. So we tried to make a real surgical um change to this. So I'm going to read into the record the um the language that that staff put together for your consideration, should you wish to adopt this. And that is, um, there's two sections. So chapter eighteen point oh three point oh two oh definitions. Um, affordable housing means a housing unit for which a person earning eighty percent or less of area median income would not pay more than thirty-three percent of their gross income for housing payments. And that's the definition that we adopted as part of our um construction excise tax. That's the same definition. The second uh change would be in chapter eighteen oh three oh oh four dot oh four oh. Uh, prohibited murals, section A. Murals are prohibited on sites developed in residential buildings that contain or include fewer than five dwelling units. Murals are prohibited in the R one, R two and R three zones. Here's the new part. Unless on an affordable housing building of at least five dwelling units that is subsidized. See any type of their uh with local, state or federal government funds. Any, I'll take any questions on that. Otherwise, just let you know, you kind of your uh options tonight. You have really four of them that I can identify. One is the mayor said is we can have a conversation, but take no action. Um, and we can bring this back to you on May twenty-eighth or another date. Um, you could choose to reject the language that I just read to you and hold us, hold the second language, second reading with your current language. You could adopt the new language, hold the second meeting tonight. Or you could adopt the new language and wait until another meeting to allow for more time for a comment. Dan, is that, are those our options? Anything else?
Right, the um under the charter, it's a little ambiguous, but if you want to amend this ordinance between first and second reading, I recommend you discuss it thoroughly now and get a notion what you want to do. And it's been read out loud, so it's available for adoption, second reading and adoption at the next meeting. So you'll have this opportunity to discuss it and then the next meeting to adopt something as you, as you wish to proceed.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Abigail. Questions for Abigail? I guess, comments about the plan that I kind of suggested that was one of Abigail's four choices. Does that seem like a way to proceed or?
I think I don't understand it. Um, the the murals or the edit staff presented seems super reasonable and I'm on board for passing it, but I, what what do you what would waiting do or what are you wanting to do?
Have enough voices. If we can wait a little bit and get some more voices, we've, we've, we've uh at various times, the four of us have voted not in agreement with each other on this. It's been a a a a winding path and I don't want it to feel like we made a change and rushed it through.
Specifically on this topic or murals in residential zones uh in general, I mean, I'll just, just, just this specific topic?
That, that, right, right. So uh, Abigail had drafted a very very uh small targeted change.
Mm-hmm.
Of course. Um, I would be more concerned if it was a bigger change, but still, be having it be a change, I don't want folks to feel like they missed their chance to 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 speak, to speak, councilors to speak about it.
For for this change, I understand.
Um, in regards to this specific um change, um, I generally am not in favor of micromanaging is the wrong uh choice of words. Um, the creating a a small focused carve out for one particular housing type based on particular qualifications. Uh, if we were to allow this for affordable housing, why would we not allow it for other housing or just housing that may still be affordable, but might not meet this strict definition of it? Um, so if we're going to expand this policy, I would be more in favor of, of slowly moving into allowing it in the R three zone, for example, if we want to allow it in this type of development.
I've heard uh arguments against that point. I'd be happy to say them or listen to them.
I, I mean, I certainly um would love any murals in Hood River. I, I think, um you know, I voted against the the ordinance, uh, the passing of the ordinance because, or the resolution. Um, not because I didn't agree with murals, but because I didn't agree with keeping them out of certain areas, et cetera. This goes into that a bit. Um, I don't want to single out affordable housing um in any way. I think it should be completely integrated with the community and and in in every way, shape and form. Um, however, uh, I I do want, would love for them to have their mural. So it's a, you know, um, I I I would be probably hard pressed to 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 vote, uh, not, not, not to vote for it, um, because of that. Um, but much like the last uh resolution that I voted against, um, because it kept it out of the historic district. But much like the last, uh, resolution that I voted against, um, because it kept it out of the historic district. Um. You know, that, that, that's like my, my, my thought about what I, how, what, how I would vote or not is if we didn't have the votes, I probably would vote for it is what I'm thinking at this point to, to get that mural, but. I don't know. I know we don't want to talk about murals forever, uh, as well. We kind of beat that, uh, you know, that, that. That discussion quite, quite dead. So, um. Yeah, it's, I, I don't want to do things piecemeal either, like, like Grant said, um, but, um. With, with the, the council, current, with the current council's thoughts about, you know, um, murals, I don't, I don't see another way to do it, I guess. So. Those are kind of my thoughts.
I guess I'll, I'll add, um. I, you know, I don't want to open this up to the entire R three. We've had months of discussions on this and I think. Yes, there can be apartment buildings in R three. There can also be single family homes and everything in between and. Um, part of the point of this is that you, again, we're starting more restrictive and, and going out, but. That it may not, and this is discretionary, but you know, it may not be something that folks want, um, you know, my, my neighbor Joe. To paint a giant whale on the side, you know, like that's, and that's fully just artistic vision, but. There's a difference between the murals that are in our commercial zones and that may just be in a residential neighborhood. And so I. Understand not wanting special carve outs, um, but I do think there is a difference between. Uh, some buildings that are, you know, government funded and or inner, you know. Some sort of public service and just the entire zone. And I'd also, I do, I mean, I do agree that I also don't want to have something that's specially identified to say, hey, this certain type of person lives here. Um. But given we were asked by our partners to allow it.
I have a question for you. Uh, can you expound on the difference in between? Government subsidized or supplied housing versus not?
What do you mean?
Uh, why, why, why we would go to the effort to create a carve out for that particular housing type, uh, versus? Other housing types.
Lovely, because they have asked us to.
If.
No, I would, I would probably not make this carve out unless. Our partners specifically said, we really want this.
Um. If, if I may speak to that for just a moment, um, as we talk about affordable housing, um, I think we as staff, as we evaluated this. I really wanted to limit to affordable housing that has some relationship to government, because that actually maybe allows us a chance to partner with the agency that's putting together the mural. Right? As opposed to, um, just being truly private ownership. The other part would be sometimes when we talk about affordable housing. Um, we can talk about naturally occurring affordable housing, which can be something that is, uh, an older building and, and, um. You know, but doesn't have a necessarily government relationship. So we were trying to narrowly, uh, define, um, the kind of, uh, structure and the kind of. Um, relationship, you know, partner, agency that we were looking for. So that was the staff's thinking. Council can, of course, just take that under advisement.
I, I would personally hope that any, any opportunity to get a mural in Hood River would. Uh. You know, allow some education about what murals do, like, like the mayor was just saying, it was fully my intention, I thought. Regarding my decision making around whether or not to allow murals in the historic district was simply because of the quality. Uh, access to another side, uh, of, of a story, et cetera. So, you know, though I don't, I'm not comfortable. Uh, fully with the idea of just doing it within the affordable housing complex, and I don't think our partners necessarily are either. I think, um. It would go a long way to get another mural, get, get people acquainted with, with, with the power of murals. So. Um, I don't like the mechanism. I don't like the singling out, but I like, I like that part of it.
I, I'm reminding myself that of course, four votes makes a yes. So at, at any point, if somebody wants to make a motion, then we can vote on it. Like. That's, we, we have the correct process in place. That's good, no matter, no matter of vacancies and we have the right process.
And your, your packet includes two, uh, two possible motions for either to adopt this language or to reject that language and continue with our, you know, the current language. So.
Uh, so. If, if we were to push this to the next discussion, uh, I don't believe camp counselors at them are willing to read that section.
Let's, let's clarify that. Abigail, will he be here on the twenty?
No.
Okay, so the, so that is equal enough, so this is equal enough. So Gladys would be the maximum possible increase, right?
Correct.
Um. And would, would it be detrimental in any way? With this, would they have, uh, run the risk of losing a mural, um, if we didn't take action on this sooner than later?
I'm for sure they can wait. We're, they're aware of this conversation.
Will staff? Uh, uh, be discouraged if we take this motion, uh, with, or don't take a motion like this? I, I know.
Staff just looks forward to council's direction.
I'm conscious that we, we, we've talked. I have a lot about this.
Or we sending a, a more powerful message than I realized with our. It's slowing, going slower. Like, I thank you for raising that point.
So. Well, I love discussing this excessively. Um. I am, I am a bit of the level, you know, whether it's this particular provision or all of the provisions we've come up with of let's pass something, see how it goes. Things kind of like this is of all things, this can be. Changed and redirected and, and adaptively managed going forward. Um, I, I'm kind of a love that I'd like to just. Get something passed.
Sorry, I feel you come to speak to that. So the, the, the second half that I, I, I agree with. The, of, of all things, the, the, the problem with this is if we, if we try out a permissive ordinance and somebody paints, you know. Megan loves the Seattle rain on, on, on the wall. There it is.
Well, I guess so, which is the point of, I think this is a very not permissive one, which is what I was fighting with to start with, but like, let's. Let's pass that and see what happens. And then I think the comments we've heard in the interest of making it more permissive. Have something to build on.
I suppose there's, and. There, there's another situation, which is where we try to pass something tonight and it fails. Right? We vote whatever it is and it goes three to one or something, then. Then we're like.
You're still at a first reading.
Okay, as long as we're still at a first reading, we're not like, oh, now the first reading, the bump, like.
Yeah.
Because I think, I think my sense coming into this meeting was that, yeah, Megan goes to want murals in, in, in any residential, so this isn't gonna go.
Like again, prior to someone telling me it's really important to their project, that would have been my attitude.
Great, thank you.
Is there a suggested motion in the pack and I can't find it?
There is. It's on, uh, page eighty six is the one to, uh, allow murals in the affordable housing and, uh, to reject that, uh, proposal is the motion on page eighty seven.
I'm gonna try this and we'll see how this goes, but I move to adopt ordinance twenty eighty one, adding. Section eighteen point zero three, original art murals to the Hood River municipal code with suggested additions to allow murals on affordable housing developments.
Moved by Saunders. Not just to be super clear, because we don't usually have ordinance, uh, motions like this. That was bottom of page eighty six. The, the first ordinance before the words or.
Correct.
Not the one that's virtually identical on the next page eighty, right? Are we all clear where we are in the cosmos?
Yes.
It's moved by Saunders.
Second.
Second by subpoena. Uh, discussion.
I hope in the future that should we choose to pass this or anything else related to murals or other opportunities for people in the community. The opportunity can be extended to everyone in the community and not. Awarded to just one particular group. And not everyone else.
I will echo exactly what you just said, couldn't say that.
Any further deliberation? I call a question. All in favor?
I.
I.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. So does that mean we're doing second reading?
I'm looking to the city attorney. I, I think you have the option of doing second reading tonight or you can, uh, wait two weeks and do it then.
Dan, tell us if we can do it tonight, please.
Um, you could do it. Tonight. If, if it feels good, read it.
Great, thank you. So, uh, in terms of process, does that mean it'll come up on Jen's?
Correct.
That's, okay.
Yeah, and I believe it's on that agenda.
Okay. Okay, so it, it proceeds, it proceeds to meeting order, great. So I'm turning to page two and we're doing the consent agenda. Is that where we are?
And may I stop for just a moment? Um. You know, when we started earlier today and we had the urban renewal for lack of a quorum, we do have a port commissioner who's going to join us at eight P M. for our executive session. So we will have a quorum for that and we'll, we will have that after all. And that notice, that was, meeting was noticed at eight P M. or later. So I think we're on track.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to Jen for working behind the scenes to make that happen.
Right. Okay, so. We are now at the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
I just had one question, um, for, uh, it looks like Dustin on the development code audit, um, the up to five thousand four hundred. For the, um.
Focus group contract, is that coming from the planning budget or where does that get pulled?
Uh, we, um. One thousand of it would be from the state's budget, um, and what they approved, the balance four thousand in change would be from. Our professional services line item budget. We had originally budgeted, budgeted this entire project in that budget. Um. And in between the time of budgeting for the project, uh, we received a state grant. So we have a, a surplus of money that, uh, that we have available. So it is budgeted. We just budgeted the whole project, not just one component. So we have ample, ample funds out of professional services.
And this item is for one virtual focus group for ten to twelve participants.
Correct. One of ten. Um. One of ten meetings or excuse me, um. Focus groups that we intend to have. For this, it also includes recruitment, translation services. Uh, it is by far and away. You know, nearly eight percent of the entire product, budget of the project.
I will move, we approve the consent agenda.
By Saunders.
Second.
Second by subpoena. Question? All in favor?
I think Grant has something.
On the consent agenda, the change order number two for the road. Out here. Um. Second.
Uh. Is. Is the, the, the source of money, is, is that counted in any way, uh, to the road fund or any other fund, uh, as opposed to just being a change order?
No, the second and Oak intersection is, um, a hundred percent being funded by the urban renewal district. So I'm not touching the road fund.
Alright.
Correct. Uh, still, still on the moved and seconded on the consent agenda, any further discussion on the consent agenda motion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Action items, elevated sidewalk.
Alright. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Uh, Adam Schmied, Public Works Director. And on page one forty six of your packet, uh, you will find the cover sheet for the, uh, elevated sidewalk. Um. The elevated sidewalk is, uh, located on Main Street, uh. Runs the entire block from, uh, May to Kings Lane on the north side of the road. Uh, it was, uh, construction, constructed in nineteen forty five. Uh, elevated for, uh, because of topographical features in the area. Uh, one side of it is being supported off of, uh, uh, retaining wall, uh, or like a stem wall. The other side is, uh, is supported on tier blocks. Um. In twenty nineteen, the city entered into a, a local agency, um. Agreement with ODOT, um, on a, a cost sharing program. The project is currently in design and near completion. Um, the Hyde Street Gate, uh, project, uh, has a roundabout, uh, at the same intersection of May and thirteenth. And there is a small portion of the, uh, roundabout that will impact the sidewalk, uh. Staff's gone over both projects, uh, feels like there's, uh, not enough to impact, uh, the, the project and delay, uh, the, the sidewalk project any longer. Uh, current cost today, uh, roughly a hundred and two thousand. And, uh, if council does decide to continue on with the project, uh, we would be. Uh, looking, uh, at around one point four million to complete the project. So, um. What I ask for tonight, uh, is, um. Counsel's direction in, uh, either halting the project or, uh, continuing on, uh, with the project.
Thank you, Adam. Questions for staff? Megan and Linda?
Uh, I guess my first question is when, when does this actually need to be decided? What's the timeframe?
Honestly, it's kind of been a moving target, uh, but it's. It, it, it's like now.
Okay, um, if there's any space for it. I'd be politically correct, but this makes me very, very mad, um, and not because of staff's actions. Um, and I would like to. Assuming other counselors agreed, I would like to do some political conversations with the governor's office and our legislative representatives to talk about how stupid. This is and how much it is bankrupting us and all the local governments to work. With a particular state agency. Um. But I'd like to at least open that conversation before we make a decision, but that's not really a possibility. I guess, uh, I need to know that, but maybe I want to open that conversation, even if we have to make a decision tonight anyway, but.
Yeah. Definitely have a conversation about that.
Thank you, counselor. I think ODOT is looking to put this out for the engineer's estimate and, um, out to bid fairly soon. Um, they have stip dollars that they feel are expiring. I don't know if that's the correct term, but that's, uh, how they presented it to us. So we are looking for a decision tonight, but. Um, I definitely hear you on wanting to also work, um, some political communications and channels and I can, I definitely taking notes and, uh, can come to, come back to council with some options for that.
So.
I just wanted to first express my support for that. Uh, second, secondly, um, so if we were to say no, we don't want to proceed with the project, you know, you said it was a hundred and. Uh, thousand dollars in change so far, but if we were not to proceed, there'd be more fees incurred. So, um, what would those be in the total?
So the, the total would be roughly seven hundred thousand. Um, and then we would, we, for seven hundred thousand, we would have a set of plans.
So we're looking at, excuse me, seven thousand, seven hundred thousand, no sidewalk, one point four million sidewalk.
Right.
I had the same comment that, that.
Further questions?
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to make a motion, but I also, I guess I want a read on, uh, it sounded like Doug was supportive, but, uh, the other two counselors or mayor and counselor. Uh. I don't know the exact path and I'm definitely gonna work with staff on that, but. Are we as a body or are you guys fine with me individually saying that, like, I mean, this is the second or third time we've run into that. This is even worse than the last few where. It just breaks us and there's, you know, you are over a barrel and there's no other option. Like the option is spend a bunch of money to get nothing and. Like, we can't keep doing this. And I don't want to do this now. And I think, yes, we, I think go forward, given the options we have, but like. This is untenable. Um. So thoughts?
Uh, I've always been a big supporter of your jurisdictional transfers.
This isn't even a, oh my god.
I know, but it's, it's in, in related to what you mentioned earlier. Goes, gives, uh, control of the local trades back to local jurisdictions to fix or adjust as, as need be, the locals.
As near as I can tell, this is a, I hope you're nice and vote yes, Paul.
But I guess you guys have any interest in having some, whether it's this particular project or the larger thing, having some conversations about. The fact that this can't, you know, whether it's us as a local government or honestly, I know local government run into this, this, the current system is not working.
I would be open to talking to the, uh. State power that be about it. It's, uh. When, 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 when it's a. When, when you're stuck in our power, us. Wishing it were different doesn't change that.
Right. I mean, I, I agree, nice vote. Well, I'm passionate is what it is, but. I also don't want to just vote on it and move forward as if this isn't. Incredibly. Not all.
And going forward. In a scorched earth strategy. And going forward, you know, scorched earth strategy, uh, does that get us? Does that get our residents the maximum benefits? Is there anything that we want to be developed now?
May I suggest, I'll have a conversation, perhaps Counselor Saunders could join me with, uh, League of Oregon Cities. Because I think this is something that is not a unique problem for Hood River and they might have some insight into, um, best ways to approach. And then maybe their, uh, transportation policy group is working on this topic. I know they're really concerned about infrastructure generally, uh, and roads is a big piece of that that was not addressed in last, this last legislative session. So LLC might be the place to start, along with, um, I think Regional Solutions, uh, staff.
Grant, do you have any wisdom from those staff, what he is?
They are highly focused on, uh, additional sources of revenue that covers their budget just from the job. Uh, they've cut maintenance and ops. Uh, so they, they, ODOT as an entity is fighting to maintain, um, scope and survival. So it's, it's definitely not an enviable position to be, um, working from. Uh, I move, uh, I'll, right, uh, I move that we direct staff to continue this project through construction in cooperation with ODOT.
Moved by Paulson.
Second.
Second by subpoena, let the record show. Thank you. Uh, further discussion, further news only. All in favor?
Mayor, may I make just a short comment? Yeah. I just want to, uh, thank Haley, Adam, um, Will, Chris Long, Jenny, our finance director. Um, all of the staff who have met many multiple times, Dustin, um, to work through this and bring you, um, which we really have explored every option before we came to you. Um, and have been working on this for months. And you've heard some of these chapters of the story. So I just want to commend staff. It has been a frustrating experience and um, they've worked really hard to get to this point. So thank you all.
Yeah, and just for additional clarification, the Oregon Infrastructure Bank is pretty painless process to go through, relatively rapid. Uh, it is a debt instrument, so we have to manage that. But going through the process and securing the funds using that instrument is not an overly cumbersome process. There's a marginal cost associated with it, but it's, it's relatively small compared to ever most ever reasonable other source of funds.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you, staff. I didn't have to breeze across that. Well, it would be frustrating as well. All right, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna take a break and then we'll return for discussion.
Hello, Mayor, councilors. Um, so this is just kind of for you to know and to acknowledge. So we are hoping to apply for the ODOT carbon reduction program grant. Uh, very much in this. So it is a program through ODOT that we would provide a ten point two seven, I think, percent match to it. And we would be looking for specifically electric vehicles. Um, not the charging infrastructure. We're planning on doing that internally because there are a lot of federal hoops to try to jump through to get federal charging stations. And this is federal funding just passing through ODOT. And we met with an ODOT representative that basically told us that it would be better for us to just do it internally if we were only doing a couple of stations. If we were doing a whole bank that was something different, but for just a couple, it would be better to try to do something with like a Pacific Power or just call an electrician, see if you can even just plug into your existing power supply. So this grant itself, we are looking at potentially three electric vehicles to replace our current three of four small light duty electric vehicles. This would leave one remaining that is further along in our vehicle replacement schedule. And the next, the two that we are looking at are in the next, or the three that we're looking at are in the next two fiscal years of vehicle replacement. So there is nothing in this that would happen this year. Um, it looks like the vehicles wouldn't even be available until late twenty twenty-five, so it'd be pushed into next fiscal year. But the application is due May thirty-first. There is nothing specific needed for the application from council. In the past, you guys have had to write letters or approve actual grant applications. There's nothing in this grant specifically that requires that, but I would love just to have acknowledgement from you that you are in support of it. And then we can put the minutes from this meeting as part of our application just to strengthen the game.
Um, two quick ones, uh, fully understand not doing charging stations through the federal government. Um, do you have any like estimate of the cost of doing two stations?
Um, we had an electrician come out and he's working on getting us a price.
Uh, but is it like a couple thousand or like?
Oh, I, six thousand or less.
Oh, great.
Is what I've, is what I envision.
Um, and then for the, the cars themselves, again, federal money, um, the, uh, like what's the like extra reporting or staff time or, or, or what, are there other hooks that we're not aware of yet? Are under?
There is not. So for the first, I believe it's a year after, we have to report on vehicle miles traveled. Um, and after that point, it is just, um, us then moving forward with it being just vehicle and like equipment purchase versus a charging station or something like that. It's just basically proving that it was implemented, that it did work. And then we can go forward and we wouldn't need to do any further reporting after that.
It's incredibly simple.
Are these vehicles going to be stored inside or outside?
They would be planned to be stored outside based off of our current locations for potential charging up at the public works yard.
Yeah, the reason why I asked is these vehicles are known in cold weather, not absurd. Uh, especially stored outside. Uh, friends who have Teslas and every anytime it's gotten near thirty-two degrees, they don't function. Uh, they just won't start at all. Uh, so a concern I have is once our temperature around here, which is that, which it does for a good part of winter, what, what are we going to, uh, do when, when that weather event happens?
So a lot of what I've seen is it's very similar to a gas powered vehicle that you precondition. So it's called, so you basically power start the car while it's still plugged into a charging. For one, for two, it does reduce your range slightly, ten to twenty percent is what I have seen. But the hope would be that these are very low mileage usage vehicles. So these are the vehicles that are used by our city engineer, our construction inspector. They are not highly used. And so the charging level would never get below the point that that would be so much of an issue, um, until it gets to like negative. And at that point, that's why we're only doing three out of the four. These aren't critical vehicles. And if it does get to that point that these vehicles do not start, they use that fourth vehicle to go on to their inspections or that. And at that point, we then precondition it, we get it ready for it to be used in the future.
I'm confused about this topic, this question. We're friends with Teslas in New England who do not have this problem. I do not believe that this is true, that they don't start when it's cold. Their range certainly does not increase at lower temperatures. But the way I heard it described does not match my experience.
I'll play, uh, along. I had a Tesla, uh, I had no indoor parking and, uh, started all the time. Um, the, uh, the, the battery is, is degraded in terms of the storage. Um, certainly the networks by which you're able to charge, we've seen issues across the country in deep cold. Um, but access to that, you know, we're not going to have to go to a public, uh, bank to do anything if we have the access. And, you know, for doing, uh, sort of observational, uh, commenting, I had one, never had a problem.
I'll let my friends know that it's just them.
Or you can let your friends know that it's not Doug.
Yeah. Well, and that's what I have seen in terms of that. Kind of don't let your car get low quarter of a tank, don't let your charge get below twenty percent. That's a lot of what happened this year back east. Is that people were at five, ten percent charging and then while waiting in line because the charging stations were taking so much longer to charge, their vehicles completely ran out of charge.
I'm, I'm only bringing this up because this is entirely anecdotal. Uh, there, there was fully charged and plugged in when they were trying to get it going. I'll, I'll let them know that theirs has a problem. And hopefully ours is not experiencing the same problems.
If there's a study or something to say, I'm all, I'm all ears. I, I can't go off, you know.
Yep. Is anecdotal, just ask the question.
Not a question, but I, sounds like, yeah, we're not converting the whole fleet. This is a good time to, with minimal cost density, try these out, see what works, see if there are issues. Um, so I, I'm certainly supportive. I'm moving forward.
It's a great way to leverage funds as well.
Help me understand why you were laughing about the quotes on the grant, because it sort of sounds like if they're giving us ninety percent, that's kind of a grant.
It is kind of a grant. It's just anytime it's federal, it seems like the quotes are necessary.
The grant tends to come with a lot of.
Yeah, a lot of extra requirements. That's not quite so free money.
Uh, I, I would entertain a motion, I guess.
It's more just, uh, thumbs up, head nod.
Jennifer.
Your honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for the first, oh, wait, second and final reading of ordinance twenty eighty-one by title only.
I move, we read ordinance twenty eighty-one murals for the second time by title only.
Second. Second by subpoena. I guess it bears noting here that this is one where we changed the language between the first and second reading, which is an uncommon thing. It's allowed, the attorney was helping, but just now I've said that. Thumbs up from Dan with the record show, uh, Jennifer, roll call, right?
Counselor subpoena.
Hi.
Counselor Paulson?
Hi.
Counselor Saunders?
Yes.
Your honor.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty eighty-one, ordinance amending the Hood River Municipal Code by amending a new Title eighteen science and regulated related regulations, chapter eighteen point zero three, original art murals to permit and encourage murals on a content neutral basis on certain terms and conditions.
Ordinance twenty eighty-one has had its second and final reading and will become law in thirty days.
Your honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance twenty eighty-two by title only.
I would move, we read ordinance twenty eighty-two waterfront maximum deadness increase for the first time by title only.
Moved by Saunders.
Second.
Second by subpoena. Roll call.
Uh, Counselor Paulson?
Yes.
Counselor subpoena?
I.
Counselor Saunders?
Yes.
Your honor.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty eighty-two and ordinance making certain determinations and findings related to and approved improving the first substantial amendment to waterfront urban renewal plan and directing that notice of approval be published.
Ordinance twenty eighty-two has had its first reading by title only and will have its second reading in two weeks. City manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of, uh, really positive things to bring you today. Um, the first is that we started a safe routes to school demonstration project, um, next to May Street Elementary. Uh, this came together very quickly, uh, starting today until June fourteenth. The May Street Elementary in the city of Hood River are implementing a school street initiative. This initiative will restrict traffic on certain streets. So this is from June and ninth to pine and eighth during specific times only. So this is the drop off and pickup time, seven A M. To eight A M. And then one thirty to two thirty P M. So residents, delivery drivers, school staff, everybody still has access to the streets during those hours. But, um, it will be, uh, there'll be some barriers that will partially block the entrance and hopefully slow down traffic during those school hours. So, um, our thanks to, um, the other partners on, uh, Safe Routes to School. They notified neighbors and just like before, there will be a survey to collect responses and we'll report back to you. Great. Uh, other pieces, um, the C D P who's, uh, and C C H C who are working on the seven eighty random road project are, are looking for a cool stakeholder group to figure out what we can start calling it. So we don't have to call it the seven eighty random, uh, project. And, uh, they're putting together stakeholder group and would like to have a city council representative. But you all think about that or if somebody wants to jump up and volunteer today, I'm, I'm good either way. I don't think there's a rush on this.
But you all think about that or if somebody wants to jump up and volunteer today, I'm, I'm good either way. I don't think there's a rush on this.
I'll volunteer for that.
Okay, thank you. I'll report back and someone will connect, connect to you. Great. Uh, on May seventeenth, we have a community cleanup. Um, we had a great time doing this last year. Excited to do it again. So that is this Saturday. Um, details are on our website. Uh, the Rand and Cascade Traffic Light, uh, is scheduled to turn on May twenty eighth. So we're very excited for that. As, uh, folks know, the, the poles and lights have been up there for quite some time and, uh, I think a lot of folks aren't quite sure what to do in that intersection right now. So just a couple more weeks, but a day after Labor, after Memorial Day there. That one's scheduled to go live. And then, uh, three, um, three big weeks happening. So I don't know if Hallmark makes greeting cards for this or not, but uh, this week is National Police Week, May twelfth through the eighteenth. Um, next week is National Public Works Week and National EMS Week. So um, thank you to, um, our staff, uh, our first responders and which, of which I will say Public Works also does a lot of first responding um, when we have snowstorms and other issues. So, um, uh, opportunity to recognize all of, um, the good folks who work here who make the city work every day in and out.
I don't know if folks watching online, maybe, uh, we have word of the budget cycle and last week we had reports from those division directors and heard more details about how uh, the police, fire, public works, folks work and it's very important. So it's the core function of our city and it's always great for me to have the kind of refresher reminder about, uh, about what's, what's under the hood kind of more.
Thank you. Have a go. Committee reports, Doug.
Nunder report.
Um, I believe the next Sister City Board meeting is Wednesday. Um, I will obviously miss it for budget meeting, but I will try to get some updates for what happens at that meeting.
Comment on that. I got a nice letter from Mayor Aikawa, the mayor of Suruta. Uh, thanking me for us having the students visiting. It was the first time students had come since COVID, so it's really been a long gap. And, uh, he was excited to have it be rejuvenated and I got so excited that I wrote him back. So now I told him it was such a pleasure to have them and sing songs with them and see the calligraphy and how much I'm looking forward to my visit in August. And so I think that this really cool program, which has definitely been on a hot, a long hiatus for years now, uh, is, is, is well back on its way to being active. I'm excited about that.
I will, yes, quickly say thank you for helping to build that bridge up even further. It's appreciated.
Anything else, Megan?
Uh, nothing. The next Region One Act meeting is on June third, which is the same night we're meeting the county to talk, talk annexation. So.
Again, darn, conflict. I had a couple of things happen. I went, uh, two, two Friday nights ago to the event at the Readiness Center in the Dalles for MMIW, Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women, which is, I mean, the statistical thing is just like the, the discrepancy is horrible. It was super well organized, I thought, super well attended. I got to, uh, sort of make manners with Don Lemieux, who's on my Equity Advisory Council, who's a staffer at the next door, who's native, and she was really one of the movers and shakers behind it happening. And there was art from this artisan in, in, in Montana. It was just, it was super neat to see this all happening and tons of folks there and I knew a few of them and I met a few of them and it was a good event and I was proud to have my church honestly on the, 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 the sponsor board, like the Unitarians gave some money to it and I think folks appreciated that the mayor had come and so it seemed like a good collaboration and opportunity to show up. So I feel lucky to have that robust organizational, uh, capacity in our community. Um, I had pie with the mayor, super fun. I got some input, including about something we were just talking about. What was it? Oh darn. Uh, oh, the, 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 the May Street School traffic is a thing. Like the drop off time, like don't be going home from Pine Street Bakery at two fifteen apparently. I mean, you live literally right there, Doug. Not news to you, but, uh, the, the traffic flow, and I think this is an exciting opportunity to promote non-car access to that school, which will alleviate the, the, the congestion. We, we only have two, uh, public schools in our city, so that's a pretty big deal to address, address that. And then I'm giving State of the City on the twenty third. Thanks to Jackie for helping put together the slides for that. It's at Rotary, but everyone is welcome to attend. So we have, uh, been promoting that in the socials and people can come hear the speech. I was razzing somebody who was like, what about the farmer shop? I don't think like that many people are gonna come hear me talk, but hopefully there will be a lot of people. And so I've been kind of promoting that and that's, that's coming up. Uh, council comments, Grant.
I debated if I wanted to talk about this or not, but decided I will. I was downtown Saturday, uh, um, doing a few things and heading back when, uh, there were some other individuals that were wa, were walking around and then from a vehicle there were some younger people, uh, local students, kids, uh, who shouted racial slur at these individuals. Um, I would just wanted to say that that sort of behavior has no place in my perspective, uh, here. And I hope that, um, those individuals or the people that know them um, can have uh, thorough conversations about why that kind of behavior is unacceptable. So, that's all.
Well said. Thank you. Megan.
Um, well, that disappointing to hear. Thank you for saying that, Grant. I certainly agree. Um, I didn't have anything on my own.
A few things, um, I continue to hear from residents about how much they like that parts of Oak are shut down. Um, and I, I, I'd hope that we'd have conversations about how to, you know, be on First Friday and make, make something like, like that, that happen. Um, it gives a whole new perspective to be able to walk through the city in that, that, that manner. Um, people feel safer about going from place to place. Um, certainly would allow, allow more opportunities for maybe, um, you know, uh, terrace-like feels that, that are out there. Um, like, you know, we have parklets and things like that, but you know, it's, it's not, it's not as vibrant as it could be in that. Maybe some, some of that would be a good way to do it. Uh, it does remind me of like, you know, I, I did some volunteering for, um, the, the same street closures that we're having for Safe Routes to Schools before that. Uh, just to kind of gather data and everything. And I, I think we're sort of gathering data right now, um, having, having Second and Oak. I do really, are, are we gonna get, uh, is it gonna be a head-to-head thing with Second and Oak and Cascade and Rand or is Cascade and Rand gonna win?
I don't have an update for anybody on Second and Oak right now.
Okay, but I, I definitely see there's a lot of progress there. Um, also something in the community, a lot of people are talking about is Hood River Adopt a Dog sort of having a financial crisis. Um, I've definitely been, you know, uh, heard from a lot of people. I would encourage people, uh, in full disclosure, my band is playing at this, but, um, on, uh, Thursday, May twenty third. I have the date right? Yeah, May twenty third. There's a, uh, there's a fundraiser at the ruins for Hood River Adopt a Dog. Um, also you can go to their website uh, and donate, uh, individually. Uh, you know, having, having these services within Hood River County is, is really, really important. Um, and we're at the risk of losing uh, a, a, a very critical part of, of, of functioning society, having somewhere to bring, you know, imagine someone finds a or a police officer that, that works for the city Hood River finds a stray dog, they have to bring them to Troutdale or something like that. That's that's crazy to me, um, that we would have to do that. So, um, value their services and, and hopefully, you know, we can, uh, the, the, the town can get banned together and give them some support, um, as a stopgap measure for now, but you know, it's a, it's gonna be a funding issue. Um.
Thanks for playing the gig.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and you know, just, just a quick note, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that, uh, that Counselor Kuhnahan was, uh, was a huge, um, help for me, uh, in my transition to becoming a counselor. And he gave me a lot of support. Um, and you know, I will remember him fondly for that forever, for sure.
Thanks, Doug. Okay, that brings us to yet another relatively complicated part of our agenda. We have a couple of executive sessions of a couple of different entities. I think first, we're gonna have an urban renewal executive session. Is that right? So I'm gonna temporarily, uh, recess city council and hand the gavel to Vice Chair Saunders.
Thank you, Paul. And Jen, can you confirm a port commissioner's online? Okay. Yeah. Gonna wait until we have a quorum to call the executive session. Heard something tonight. And who will be joining us? Okay, great. Well, thank you. Okay, great. Uh, well, with Commissioner Gary joining us via Zoom, we do have a quorum for the Urban Renewal Agency. Um, so the Urban Renewal Agency will now meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute one nine two dot six six zero one E to conduct deliberations with person designated, persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room and we will end the public broadcast. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made nor final action taken in executive session. The executive session is anticipated to last
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes. At the end of the executive session, the Urban Renewal Agency meeting will be adjourned and no action will be taken. We will now discontinue the live